Congratulations. We now have two finalists. I'll have you both join me up on stage.
My name is Ashwar Ramamurthy. I'm 12 years old. I go to Luxe Middle School, and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Sangkar Ramamurthy. I go to Luxe Middle School, and I'm in sixth grade.
And they just might be related. Just a little bit.
Inoculate. May I please have the definition?
Inoculate is a verb. Introduce microorganisms, vaccines, or sera into a living body to establish immunity to a disease. Inoculate.
Inoculate.
Not correct.
Inoculate.
Correct.
Lamprie. Lamprie.
Not correct.
Farfalle. Farfalle.
Correct.
We have a champion scholar for 2017.
I call to order this meeting of the Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education for February 28th, 2017. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Ms. Mumgarth is excused for the first part of the meeting. She'll be joining us as she can.
Mr. Schulte?
Present.
I would note that the Open Meeting Act is posted at the back of the room if anyone wants to take a look at that, and we have minutes for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, those will stand as approved. Next, under Special Reports, Presentations, and Celebrations of Success, we have a treat in store. I would like to introduce the Belmont Elementary School Scholars, Let Our Light Shine. February is African-American History Month, and this group of Belmont Elementary School students have performed several times throughout February, including for the African-American Reda Inn at Lincoln Public Schools District Office and at the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. Youth Rally. I'm going to start by introducing Polly Bowie, Principal at Belmont, and I have been asked, while she's coming up, to introduce the students, if we could file around and sit in the front row there in the audience. Polly?
Well, I'd like to thank all of you for inviting our fifth-grade scholars to come tonight to present. This group of scholars was identified last year at fourth grade. They are participating in our TRACs program at Belmont, which is facilitated by Pete Ferguson and Shawna Letcher from the LPS Youth Development Team. These students were selected to participate in TRACs because they are strong students at Belmont. They show leadership skills, and they are excellent role models. The scholars presenting tonight are Diego Martinez, Taryn Thomas, Adam Sweeney, Lena Cuckoo, Salvador Herrera Perez, Amaya Reisner, Fernanda Diaz, Jarveria Mason, and J.D. Homstetter. I'd like to also thank and recognize Pete Ferguson, Shawna Letcher, Lindsay Limbaugh, our CLC Site Supervisor, Bobby Erlich, our fifth-grade teacher, and Kim Rosenthal, our Assistant Principal. And now, our Belmont Scholars present Let Our Light Shine.
What are we gonna do?
We're gonna roll!
What are we gonna do?
We're gonna roll!
Roll, joy and roll. Roll, joy and roll. My soul rises and low for the year. Joy and roll. Roll, joy and roll. Roll, joy and roll. My soul rises and low for the year. Joy and roll. Roll, joy and roll. Roll, joy and roll. My soul rises and low for the year. Joy and roll.
Music and singing played a critical role in inspiring, mobilizing, and giving voice to many who may not have one. Powerful, inspirational, unifying. Music songs motivate us to express ourselves and share emotions, and teach us to respect one another and have hope.
The words from Lift Every Voice and Sing, the Negro National Anthem, originally a poem for schoolchildren, was set to music. It captured the desire for freedom and equality.
On Valentine's Day in 1967, Erykah Franklin asked for something more than love. The Queen of Soul sang from a higher ground. She called for sacrifices out of recognition. Respect.
Rapper Common and artist John Legend reminded us in their song Glory that victory isn't won, and we'll fight on to the finish. Then, when it's all done, it takes the wisdom of the elders and young people's energy. Only then can we cry glory. A song that carried Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through troubled time was his favorite, Take My Hand, Precious Lord, and was sung by Mahalia Jackson at his funeral. King would go on to say about music.
During the 1960s, civil rights movement, music inspired courage, and music gave people reason to let their light shine. The freedom songs are playing a strong, vital role in our struggle. They give the people new hope and sense of unity. I think they keep alive a faith, a radiant hope in the future, and most particularly in our most trying hours.
This little light of mine captured the spirit and heart of movement. A gospel children's song written by Harry Dixon Loves. It became an anthem of the time thanks to the efforts of civil rights activists Zofia Horton and Fannie Lou Hamer.
The Belmont Elementary TRAC Scholars, a college graduating class of 2029, gladly present Let Freedom Sing by Vanessa Newton.
In the 1960s, on benches just for colored, black folks obeyed the rules. Waterflooders said, whites only, and blacks only. Many obeyed the rules. But on December 1st, 1955, if you miss me at the back of the bus, just look again. If you cannot find me back there, just come on up to the front of the bus. Yes, me, Ms. Taryn Thomas and Ms. Rosa Parks will be sitting right there. Rosa Parks feasted me because of her, I, Taryn Thomas, can let my light shine.
December 4th, 1955, preaching from his pulpit to 5,000 people at Holt Street Baptist Church in Montgomery, he shared his dream. That's when the history books are written in the future, somebody will have to say. Freezy Locke and Black Question, people had the moral courage to stand up for their rights. And that day, injecting a new man into the veins of history and civilization. And that day, starting the Montgomery Bus Boycott, I, Javaria Mason, can let my light shine.
This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine. This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine.
December 5th, 1955, through December 21st, 1956, for over a year, we did not ride the bus. We walked with our heads held high, letting our light shine. We let our light shine for people like Kledet Coben, a 15-year-old black girl who on March 2nd, 1955, was the first person arrested for resisting bus segregation in Montgomery, Alabama. With boycotts in Montgomery, Dr. King inspired all walkers along the bus route saying, because of them, I can let my light shine.
On September 23rd, 1957, schools for blacks in Little Rock were separate, but not equal. 15-year-old Elizabeth Eckford wanted to attend Central High because she believed there are more opportunities there than at Dunbar, that there might be more courses she could pursue, that there are more options available to let her light shine. 16-year-old Ernest Green, 15-year-old Jefferson Thomas, 15-year-old Gloria Ray, 16-year-old Terrence Roberts, 15-year-old Carlotta Walls, 16-year-old Minnie Jean Bro, 15-year-old Melba Patillo, and 17-year-old Thelma Motherschad. The Little Rock Nine integrated Central High, so I, Lena Cuckoo, could be a scholar at Belmont and let my light shine.
This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine. This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine.
On February 1st, 1960, Azelle A. Blair Jr., David Richmond, Joseph McNeil, and Franklin McCain, all freshman scholars at Greensboro, North Carolina, sat at the Woolworth's counter waiting to be served. They sang.
I'm gonna sit at the Woolworth's counter. I'm gonna sit at the Woolworth's counter one of these days. I'm gonna sit at the Woolworth's counter and be served one of these days.
Because of Greensboro Four, I, Fernanda Isla Diaz, can let my light shine.
November 14th, 1960, at a school in New Orleans, shouting filled the air. As a black six-year-old girl went to her first day of school, Ruby Knell Bridges, a first grader, walked alone, and even though parents didn't want their children in class with her, Barbara Henry, her white teacher, made sure she could let her light shine.
Will you march for your rights?
Yes, we will!
Will you march for your rights?
Yes, we will!
August 23rd, 1963, on the March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom, thousands walked for miles. Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. had a dream, a dream that one day.
Yes, one day!
This nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed, a dream which we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal.
My fellow citizens, we have come now to a time of testing. We must not fail. Let us close the springs of racial poison. Let us pray for wise and understanding hearts. Let us lay aside our relevant differences and make our nation whole. July 2nd, 1964, President Lyndon Johnson said these words upon signing the Civil Rights Act that banned discrimination in education, employment, and public facilities. We have talked long enough in this country about equal rights. It is time to write the next chapter and write it in the books of law.
August 4th, 1965, President Lyndon Johnson said these words upon signing the Voting Rights Act that guaranteed all African-Americans the right to vote. Because President Lyndon Johnson believed in civil rights for all, all are able to let their lights shine.
January 20th, 2009, President Barack Obama, the 44th President of the United States of America, and the first African-American President of the United States stood before thousands on the Washington Mall, speaking to all Americans, saying, "On this day, we gather because we have chosen hope over fear, unity over purpose, conflict, and discord."
So what time is it, Mr. President?
The time has come to set aside childish things. Yes, you heard me, to set aside childish things. The time has come to reaffirm our enduring spirit, to choose our better history.
This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine. This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine.
Lincoln Public Schools, I, Diego Martinez, a future student at UNL, want to know how you are gonna let our light shine. Omaha, Lincoln, North Platte, Grand Island, State of Nebraska, I, Taryn Thomas, a future teacher, want to know how you are going to let our light shine. Families, I, Amaya Reiser, a future attorney, want to know how you are going to let our light shine.
Governor and elected officials, I, Adam Sweeney, a future anesthesiologist, want to know how you are gonna let our light shine. President, I, Javaria Mason, a future KU student, want to know how you are gonna let our light shine.
Teachers, I, Fernanda Isla Diaz, a future Wildlife Center caretaker, wants to know how you are gonna let our light shine.
Scholars, I, J.D. Homstetter, a Belmont Elementary TRAC Scholar and future student at Arizona University, want to know how you are gonna let your light shine.
America, I, Lena Cuckoo, a future teacher, want to know how you are going to let our light shine.
I, Salvador Herrera Perez, want to know how you are gonna help us let our light shine.
This little light of mine, I'm gonna let it shine. Let it shine, let it shine, let it shine.
After that outstanding presentation from Belmont, that brings us to public comment. I have not gotten any blue cards. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, that'll move us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Kathy?
Moving through all the consent items, 8-1, 8-2, 8-3, and 8-4.
Sal Lanny, and then Barb?
A second.
Did you have it? Were you aiming for a second? Comments? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, that brings us to items for first reading. We'll start with item 9.1.1, Policy 1112, Community Relations Advertising. Barb?
This is something that the Policy Committee that Kathy Danick and Matt Schulte served with me on has worked on, and I'm going to turn it over to Eric Weber in case anyone has any questions.
Questions? Okay.
It's just a minor change.
Yeah, minor change, and there was some regulation developed behind it to tighten up our understanding of underwriting language and how underwriting is handled in the district in terms of advertisement. And so, the regulation was developed first, and then the language in the policy was adjusted to be able to account for that.
Very good. Follow-up questions? All right, that'll be before us for action at our next meeting. Next is item 9.2.1, Skilled in Technical Sciences Renovation in Northeast and Lincoln High Schools. Dr. Standish?
Yes, before you, you have an agenda item for the projects in front of you. You did receive a schematic design book that gave the details to the project. Scott Weeskamp would be ready to answer any questions you have. If we are able to sufficiently answer your questions this evening due to the spring break, cancellation of the board meeting, we would request that if you feel comfortable advancing this to action tonight, it would be greatly appreciated for project timelines. If not, we want to make sure we get back to you with all the details you need, and we would just then adjust what we're doing.
Lanny?
Well, I begin by moving approval of item 2, excuse me, by moving that we waive our second reading and immediately approve item 9.2.1, and then I have a follow-up.
Kathy?
Defense of my Normandy's rocket, I would second that.
Lanny?
And then, if we could, since we're moving this to action tonight, I ask Scott if he would come forward and share a little bit about the goals and features of this particular request.
All right, thank you. Again, we appreciate you taking a look at it and potentially moving it forward. The two projects combined as one, Lincoln Northeast and Lincoln High, are kind of a byproduct of the Career Academy. These renovations were in the original planning prior to the 2014 bond issue, and as we tried to structure that bond issue to have no tax increase, these were one of the few projects that kind of got pushed to the unfunded list. And so, last fall, when we knew we had some extra money from savings from earlier projects in the bond issue, we added Lincoln Northeast, Lincoln High renovations that we're going to talk about, the Belmont IAQ project, and the Science Focus Program Zoo School project. Those were the three projects that got added. So, this is about a $1.1 million, again, byproduct of the Career Academy. It's an overhaul to both automotive programs at both of these two locations, as well as the welding machine tool areas at Lincoln High and welding areas at Northeast, and much-needed improvements. Technology is much different today. The equipment is much different today, and I think our kids just need exposure to that as they move on into those real trades, once they get out of high school or trade school or college. So, this is an overhaul to both of those programs.
Barb?
So, this means that these programs will remain there, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I think that's an important opportunity for our students because not everyone is going to go and want to dedicate a whole two years to Career Academy. It's nice to be able to have the option of taking automotive or welding or machine tool class or two, so it's a great idea.
Kathy?
I think what this does is it falls in line with our college and career-ready for students, whether they're in a traditional four-year high school or any of our academy focuses. I've been in there watching the automotive programs, and I've seen the welding areas and these renovations I know will be utilized by students immensely. And the automotive, automotives have changed, automotives, automobiles have changed so much in the last 10 years, I'm not sure the people that learned how to fix them or build the Model T would even understand today's vehicles. But I did see the automotive program at Lincoln Northeast a couple of years ago, and they actually rebuilt a Model T so they could understand why you needed an automobile to work, and how it worked, and the motion. And they put a lot of science skills. I would hope as we move forward with this that we look at a lot more interdisciplinary opportunities for students where they can use these type of learning environments and bring together things like math and science skills and understand how they link with, how does an engine run? How do they, what is the temperature doing in a welding? Because I had the kids explain that to me, and I was like, you guys are over my head. And so, it's pretty impressive to watch the students in these classes.
Matt?
Excuse me, I'm gonna ditto especially what Barb said earlier. There's this strategic planning process. I heard a lot of people asking questions about whether we were losing all of these access to these types of programs at our high schools with the Career Academy, so I'm glad to see we're retaining that. I know we approved a few different projects with the remaining bond money. Is this the last of them, or there's still another one or two of those still pending?
You'll be seeing the Belmont project come forth shortly.
Okay.
I think that bids in mid-March, and we're yet to sign a formal agreement with the Lincoln Children's Zoo and the city regarding that project. So, those are two projects that you'll see forthcoming.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Lanny?
Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. First, thank you to Scott and to your team for all the work that you've done on all of the 2014 bond projects, because it's that hard work that resulted in the savings that are allowing us to extend those dollars further. And then, again, as a couple of my colleagues have mentioned, the importance of career and technical education. For many years, we talked about having students be college-ready, and now really the focus is college and career-ready, and that applies not only to students at the Career Academy, but to students at all of our schools. And then, finally, I really appreciate that this project is yet another way that we're making the best use of the facilities that we have, because we are definitely a growing district with growing needs, and so, projects like this that go back into our buildings and make sure that we're, you know, using every square inch of space to the best possible use are really vital and important. So, thank you, Scott.
All right, seeing nothing else, we have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Scott?
Appreciate the comments, thank you. And just to piggyback on that and a comment Miss Danick made, we're gonna have a board work session on the 10-year facilities and infrastructure plan on March 20th, and we'll talk more about these career ed spaces, because there is a line item on that 10-year plan to do continued enhancements and improvements to those areas. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. All right, so we have moved to set aside our policy and move this item to action tonight. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, that brings us to item 9, excuse me, 10.1.1, Newly Annexed Property to the City of Lincoln. Start with Lanny.
I'll start by moving approval of item 10.1.1, Newly Annexed Property to the City of Lincoln.
Is there a second? Barb?
My second.
Lanny?
And then, this item comes from the Planning Committee, where I served with Matt and Barb. It was discussed at our last meeting. Be happy to answer any further questions.
Matt?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on Agenda Item 10.1.1, because this parcel includes the property of the nonprofit that I'm the executive director of, so.
Very good. Questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Abstain.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Let's see, that brings us down to informational items from board committees. We have the budget calendar for the 2017-18 budget. Mrs. Danick?
The Finance Committee has met, and for your viewing, it's, we don't really adopt it, we really review it. Your budget calendar is part of this agenda, and are there any questions on it?
Seeing no questions? Ah, we got one from Barb.
It's not a question, I just wanted to point out that any community group that would like to have a presentation of the budget, that they could just call up the district office and request such a workshop or presentation, and we'd be happy to come out, visit.
Very good. Thanks, Barb. Kathy?
And just so the community understands, this is the first step in our budget development process. We put the calendar out there. The calendar takes into effect the actions of the legislature, reviewing our financial income from the, that will be coming from things that are passed at the legislature, and there are sometimes uncertain things that happen with the legislature, so we have to make sure our calendar encompasses that and the state statute. So, we start from an end point where we have to have things in place and move backwards from that.
That's gonna be my comment, is based on the uncertainty in the legislature. I'm glad to see that we are hopping right on top of this. I know that there are some things that we're not sure of in terms of timing. That's gonna make our jobs a little bit more difficult and harder for staff, so I'm glad to see us getting a good start on this, so thank you for that. Kathy? Other comments or questions on this? All right, seeing none. Lanny, is there a report from the Career Academy?
Career Academy Board will meet next week, no report tonight.
Okay, and then that brings us to the superintendent. And then that brings us to the Superintendent's Update. Dr. Joel?
Little bit of good news, and then not so good news. Saturday, we, thanks to our administrators and some teachers from a few of our schools, we had a record attendance for the Junior Achievement Bowling Event, which is, for those that aren't familiar, Junior Achievement is a program that brings community members into our classrooms to teach five and six lessons at all grade levels. And having been volunteers, I know many of members of my team have been, it's a lot of fun to get around kids. But they learn about finance, they learn about how markets work, they learn about stock markets. It's really, it's really a great curriculum and a great program. But again, the value is to bring people with expertise into our classrooms in front of our kids. So it serves a lot of great purposes. And then, speaking of the legislature and shortfalls, you know, of course, the news yesterday was not good about the forecasting board, another $200 million deficit, which will probably push it up over a billion dollars. And that's creating just a lot of conversation right now with regard to, you know, how do we meet that deficit? And of course, education is, you know, at the tables, and it is plural because there are multiple tables. The solutions are not readily apparent, and there's going to be some pain that is going to be administered across the state. And so much of it is tied into an ag economy that, you know, has really had a couple of, two or three really difficult years. So that concludes my report. I mean, we're staying on top of legislation to the degree that we can. I know that several of our board members have been involved with testifying. There's, I don't know, four, five, six coalitions out there that are trying to proffer some solutions. We know that we have to be part of the solution, and, you know, the answer isn't going to be, you know, leave us, leave us whole. And then interesting, and somewhat related, I was listening to Wendy Burtzal on the news today, and she was talking about the South by Southwest Job Fair that is in Austin, Texas, a 10-day event in our chamber in economic development. I'm very interested in going down there to recruit workers for some badly needed positions. And I think I heard Wendy say that if you are in software engineering or health sciences, they could, they could get hired on the spot. Multiple hundreds of opportunities in Lincoln, and of course, you know, that immediately has us thinking about schools and classrooms and budget shortfalls. But that's all good, and, you know, we'll, this too shall pass, but this next year legislative is gonna be a challenge.
Thanks, Steve. All right, next that brings us to the monthly financial report. Are there any questions for staff? Kathy?
It's not really a question, it's an observation and a thank you. I wanted to thank Dr. Standish and Jill Polly. They did some new formatting on the monthly financial report and on the ESU report.
Great, thanks. All right, next that brings us to announcements of upcoming events for the board. Tomorrow morning, we have the Chamber Coffee. I had a conflict, and so Lanny has graciously offered to deliver our report to the Chamber. March 5th, we have the Norwood Park renovation open house at Norwood Park Elementary at 1:30. March 7th is the Thank You Teacher Breakfast at the Governor's Mansion at 7:30 in the morning. March 8th, we've got the Career Academy Joint Board Meeting at 8:00 in the morning. That day, we also have the Face the Chamber Lunch at the Lincoln Country Club with David Herring at noon. March 13th through 17th is spring break. And our next board work session then is March 20th. That'll be here in the boardroom. March 24th through the 27th is the National School Board Conference in Denver, Colorado. And that brings us back to our next board meeting here on March 28th. That brings us back to public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, there is a request for a closed session from staff for reasons 2, 3, and 7. Is there a motion? Connie?
I move that we move to recess right now.
Go into a closed session for reasons number 2, 3, and 7. Is there a second? Kathy?
I would second that motion to go into closed session.
Discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danic?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. With that, we will recess to move into closed session.